Our meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing and deliberation session.
Is that better?
Now you're wired.
Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called, the applicant makes his or her presentation, commission members ask questions, if any, members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item, project, and for against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience, and please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application, and the results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commissioners, commission members, may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead, unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and plan unit developments, PUDs. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. Please turn off all cell phones at this time. Roll call, myself here, Ms. Libby Latham. Ms. Jennifer, Mr. John Valas. Ms. Bess Rich.
Here.
Mr. Nick Omburger.
Here.
Mr. Thomas Doyle.
Here.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Ms. Kena Andrews.
Here.
We have a quorum, and we will begin. Our first applicant will be holdovers. Item number one is the east terminus of Leighton Place. This subdivision request is recommended for tentative approval, subject to staff recommendations. Is the applicant present? Are you in acceptance of this?
Yes.
Is there anyone here to speak for? Is there anyone here to speak against? Item number two, 5289 Halls Mill Road, zoning and PUD application.
Excuse me, let me, I'm gonna recuse.
Mr. Valas is recusing. Both parts were recommended for approval. Is the applicant present?
Here.
Are you in agreement with staff recommendations?
We are.
Is there anyone here to speak for this application? Is there anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Moving to extensions, item number three, 1621 Virginia Street, Lad People's Stadium subdivision. This application is recommended that an extension be granted for one year. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Is the applicant present? Item number four, east and west sides of Begaman Road, extending to the east side of Snow Road, south and extending to the west side of Hill Road. This is recommended that the extension be approved. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to speak for or against this extension? Thank you. Item number five, west terminus of Windridge Drive, extending to the south terminus of Wingen Drive. It's recommended that this request be granted a one-year extension. Applicant present? Are you in acceptance? Anyone here to speak for or against this? Thank you. New subdivision applications. Item number six, northwest corner of Airport Boulevard and Calvert Road, the Lumpkin subdivision. It is recommended for tentative approval based on staff recommendations. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number seven, 1403 Alba Avenue. This applicant is recommended for tentative approval, subject to staff recommendation. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement? Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number eight, west side of the north terminus of Jim Busby Road North, Dan Perole subdivision. It's recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number nine, 25 West I-65 Service Road, the Rule Park subdivision. It's recommended for tentative approval, subject to staff recommendations. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Is there anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number 10, east side of McGregor Avenue, Lad Place subdivision. It's recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number 11, 2338 Dolphin Island Parkway. This application is recommended for tentative approval, subject to staff recommendation. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against?
Mr. Chairman, there's some neighborhood opposition to this, and they, their attorney provided me a copy as I was walking in here today of a temporary restraining order from Circuit Court that was just granted today, requiring them to withdraw the application. However, that order is only good for 10 days because it's a temporary restraining order. So, I've talked to both sides, and we're gonna hold it over for 30 days because they have to go back to court before 10 days, before that order expires. So, we just need to hold that over for 30 days.
All right.
Two meetings.
Two meetings, excuse me, two meetings.
This application will be held over for two weeks?
Two.
Two, two meetings, I'm sorry.
So that's the 30 weeks.
November 17th.
November, okay, for the November 17th meeting, that will probably be granted. No, it will be granted. You'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. No action will be taken at this time. However, you are welcome to speak now if you so choose.
There's no application before us right now, actually.
Okay.
So, there's nothing to discuss.
All right. We almost made it through. Item number 12, south side of Airport Boulevard, Air One subdivision. Here. This application is recommended for tentative approval, subject to staff recommendations. The applicant present? Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Is there anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? Item number 13, 1618, 1660, and 1700 Leroy Stevens Road, Calvary subdivision. Application is recommended for tentative approval, subject to staff recommendations. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Is there anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New planning approval applications. Item number 14, 609 and 611 Dolphin Street. Thomas Doyle is recusing. This request is recommended for approval, subject to following, subject to conditions. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the conditions? Is there anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New plan unit development applications. Item number 15, 2955 and 2989 Dolphin Street, Robert Myers. Commissioner Libby Latham is recusing. This one is recommended for tentative approval, subject to staff recommendations. Is the applicant present? Are you in approval?
I'm in.
You may do so.
Tom Clark, Clark, Gear, Latham &amp; Associates Engineers, representing the applicant, 3901 Springfield Avenue. We have no significant objections to the staff report. I would like to request one clarification. The staff report states that we need one additional frontage tree, which we don't contest that. What we would like to request is permission to have a little latitude for the placement. This particular property is fronted in the roadway by three 36 or so-inch large live oak trees, and we feel that planting a small tree under that is not gonna survive and will perpetually have to replant that tree or try and nurture it. And we would like to be able to put that tree somewhere else on the site, or perhaps donate it to the tree bank. Aside from that, I have no other comments.
Does the staff have any?
The only thing, if it's relocated, I think we still would want it at least in this area if possible, so it is towards the front of the site. So, either towards the front of the site, or the donation to the tree bank. Does that work for y'all? Would I object to that?
As this is condition number 10, compliance with urban forestry, do we just add something?
Well, there's also number five.
So you're saying it's already recommended? Yeah.
Is there anything else, sir? All right, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against this? Thank you. Item number 16, 1301 Cochran Causeway. This application is recommended for approval, subject to the staff recommendations. Is the applicant present?
Present.
Are you in agreement with staff recommendations?
We are. However, there is a recommended approval from the, for the LB2, and if we could heal it for a minute and talk staff for one more thing.
16, correct?
16, Cochran Causeway.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said it was, I'm sorry. I was outside.
Is the proper applicant present? Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the time to get it answered.
Oops.
Is it okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Is this the one that came on the agenda for two minutes or so and then was pulled off? Is that the same one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And this is really the first time since the city council voted the, the new ordinance to handle the planning developments or whatever. What's being, what is this, coming under, a PUD?
PUD.
Yeah.
The site was grandfathered, and under that new ordinance, if it was grandfathered, then planning approval is not required.
Okay, and why was it pulled off before? How is it different than the original that was pulled off? Because I didn't get to study that one since it went away.
There was some confusion on staff part about whether or not planning approval should be required.
Mm-hmm.
So, to get that settled, the applicant graciously withdrew that application and allowed us to further confer with legal to determine that, yes, it was in fact grandfathered and would not be required to have planning approval.
Can't fight City Hall.
New group applications. Item number 17, 1201 and 1203 Michigan Avenue. This application is recommended for tentative approval, subject to staff recommendations, both subdivision and rezoning. Is the applicant present? Are you sure?
I blame Mr. Burr for bringing me early, I'm sorry. We are present, and I think the real matter that we'd like to address is that the rezoning is recommended for approval, but it's being recommended for approval modified. And we understand, at least I think we understand, that it's, the requested modification is to limit some of the uses on the property. And some of them, they're definitely in agreement with doing so. And so, our request would be that the rezoning be B2 instead of an LB2.
Could it be B2 instead of LB2?
Yes.
It looks like it's recommended for B2. On our paperwork, it says B2.
The application was for LB, excuse me, for B2. Staff recommended LB2 because there are uses. Given the proximity of this site to residential properties, the church directly across the street, and another one across the street, recommended LB2 because we felt LB2 would be more appropriate for the area, because of the uses that are not allowed in LB2 that are in B2.
And we understand that, and there is a lot of room, middle ground, on the restrictions. I think the biggest concerns are, so, this transaction happening with this being an impediment to it. We have a closing that is pretty much imminent, and we're trying to really get it done as a B2. This structure's been vacant for about 14 years, it's an eyesore. We understand some of the limitations that they'd like to place on the property, and we would be happy to agree to a good bit of those to kind of work it out. I understand what the, what the community doesn't want, and I understand what staff doesn't want.
Okay, well, for the planning commission to agree to something like that, there would have to be voluntary use restrictions, and that's a very specific document that we have to have, that we present to them for their review as part of the application packet.
Okay. Well, that was explained to me just a little while ago, and I understand that, and I was wondering, because what we're really trying to do is move forward with this application, we're not getting held over. Is there an opportunity to talk about it?
The commission can always talk about it, but without that document...
It's not advertised correctly.
Right, well, and if the commission were to approve it without that document, and it went to city council, they would advertise it as approved by the planning commission. Then, for you to submit that to the city council, it would have to go through the re-advertising process because the voluntary use restrictions deal with use of the property. So, it can't be added except at the planning commission time without another delay at city council time. If this is agreeable to the commission, and, you know, if you could get those to us the first part of next week, if the commission agreed to hold it over to the November 3rd meeting, that would keep you from having then that full month delay once it got to city council.
Let me make sure I wasn't, if it was approved today, it's LB2. I mean, approved today is B2. And then it went to council, and council said, "We're not going to approve unlimited B2, but we'd approve B2 with these conditions." Could it then be voted on?
No. Any condition relating to use, once it gets to city council, requires re-advertising. We've unfortunately been through that on several occasions through the courts.
Can I inject something on Charlotte Christmas, Christmas Properties? I represent the client in this. We only received this information yesterday, the staff report, so we had no indication that there was going to be a suggestion for LB2. Had we known that in time, or had we known that it had to have a formal application, we could have complied, but that was not indicated in the instructions that were sent out. So, we're caught flat-footed. We have a deadline on closing on the property, and a holdover is gonna make that very arduous because what you're saying now is the holdover will be till when?
For the planning commission, it would be November 3rd.
What if, can, if, can we hold this over for the end of this meeting? Let them fill something out now?
That's what I'm asking.
Don't we have a form upstairs?
There's a form upstairs, yes, sir.
Why don't y'all go to the third floor and get that form? Let's heal it to the agenda, see if it can get done. If not, we'll have to do what we have to do.
We really would appreciate that opportunity.
Run.
Is there anyone here else to speak for item number 17? Item number 18. Yes, sir. Please come down.
It's not matter made, but now the applicant's not gonna get to hear what he's gonna say to responding to.
Maybe he's already been in touch with the neighbors.
And, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is, I think, fully aware of the opposition. They had a similar application to this a couple of years ago. I think that's referenced in the staff report. There was a community meeting, I'm not sure if there was a community meeting this time, but opposition is known.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Charles Smith, 1410 Melrose Street. My property is adjacent to this development, and I just found out about this two weeks ago. No communication for the developer or the church, and my contention is, the church bought that property and to use it as a parking lot. And for some reason, that got all screwed up with the pastor, and that's, well, anyway, that's their business. And the property said vacant for a number of years. And the last two years, they was planning to put a family dollar there, and we objected to that. And I don't know if this is trying to be a Trojan horse for them to come back and slide that in again under the disguise of a strip mall or whatever. But my contention now is, is the traffic flow. If the church is parking on the street now, and they own that property, which they was planning on using it for parking, and if they develop this property, where is the church gonna park? They don't have a parking lot. And then the church on the other corner, they don't, they got a lot that's only gonna carry about maybe 30 cars, and they got a convention now going on, and they're parking on the Boulevard, the streets are cluttered, and the same thing with Wesley Chapel. When they have funerals, they park on the Boulevard. So, if they come in with this new development, and these stores open on Sunday, how that's gonna work for the traffic flow and the emergency vehicles getting through? And this information is old information with, that's with the zoning commission because we would never contact it on, for the size of the fence, the noise, ordinance, or the lighting, or anything. This is something that they pulled from the last request. So, we haven't had a citizen revisory board or any, any other communication.
Okay, sir. The staff comments are standard comments.
True.
So, they will look the same from time to time with, with minor, minor changes in certain situations, and so, but the, the advertisement was done, I'm assuming.
Advertisement?
That they made, they posted notices and...
On a rezoning, we send out notices, written notice to property owners within 300 feet and post a sign on the property. There's not an ad running the newspaper until it goes to city council.
The sign's been up for a couple of weeks?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, do you live on Bay Avenue?
I'm on Melrose.
You're on the next street over.
Right.
And I understand it's your community, but you're concerned about traffic on Bay?
It would be Bay and Michigan Avenue. I mean, Bay, Michigan Avenue, and Melrose. And the property in question, when you look at that drawing, and we discussed this a couple of years ago, that transmission building was built directly on the property line. It's not a 10-foot, it's not a 6-foot nor 10-foot clearance between the properties.
And that's the one good thing about these lot of new, these new developments do bring the site into compliance with the items you discuss, which are retention and drainage and setbacks. Anytime a site's demolished and redeveloped, and they have to bring it into compliance, which I think's gonna help a lot of your concerns, other than traffic, but we do have a traffic engine here to, to kind of, if you can add any comment about thoughts on impact to Melrose? Because I don't see any access to Melrose.
Most of the traffic concerns in this area, as, as Mr. Smith stated, are related to parking with the churches, several of the churches up and down. Michigan don't have designated parking, and there's no parking signs except Sundays. On this corridor, Broad Street, Dolphin Street, it occurs in other areas. I'm not sure if they park in the median, I can't say to that, but...
Yeah, they park on the median.
Okay. Parking, parking in the roadway itself is kind of standard in this area on Sundays.
All right, sir, your concerns are duly noted.
Pardon?
I said, your concerns are duly noted, and we'll take up discussion and deliberation.
Okay, thank you.
Rick, are alcohol sales allowed in, I'm sorry, are alcohol sales allowed in LB2? Like CVS at Dolphin?
Alcohol sales are allowed in B2, but a bar is not.
I'm just trying to figure out their major concern, but that's...
Item number 18, 3553 and 3455 Laola Lane. The applicant has requested a holdover until the November 17th meeting. That will more than likely be granted. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this? But you will have that opportunity at the November 17th meeting. Thank you. That ends the public session. We will now go into deliberation.
The airport university subdivision isn't addressed publicly?
It will be addressed in other business at the end of deliberations.
Item number one, east terminus of Leighton Place. It's recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll move for approval, subject to staff recommendations. Second?
Properly moved and seconded. Are we ready for the motion? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, 5289 Halls Mill Road, Mr. Valas has recused. Recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendation. Parts A and B, we'll take it as one. Parts A and B, we'll take it as one. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Passes. Item number three. Sixteen twenty-one Virginia Street for extensions. Granted, recommended for a one-year extension. Do I have a motion?
I might motion to approve.
Second.
Properly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Item number four. The extension on item number four, it doesn't say one year, is that just understood?
It would be a one-year extension.
Eastern West Side of Beggerton Road, recommended for a one-year extension. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendation, or move to approve? Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Item number five, West Terminus Wind Ridge Drive, extended to the south, recommended for a one-year extension. Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. New subdivision applications. Item number six, northwest corner of Airport Boulevard and Calvert Road. Recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Item number seven, fourteen oh three Alba Avenue. Recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendation, care recommendation.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Item, pass. Item number eight, west side of North Terminus of Jim Busby Road North. It is recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Item number nine, twenty-five West I sixty-five Service Road. Recommended for approval. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Pass. Item number ten, east side of McGregor Avenue. Lad Play subdivision is recommended for tentative approval. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Passes. Item number eleven will be held over until November seventeenth. Item number twelve, south side of Airport Boulevard. Recommended for approval. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposes. Passes. Item number thirteen, sixteen eighteen, sixteen sixty and seventeen hundred. Leroy Stevens Road, Calgary subdivision. Recommended for tentative approval. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposes. Item number fourteen, new planning approval. Six oh nine and six eleven Dolphin Street. Commissioner Thomas Dool recuses. This is recommended for tentative approval.
Move for approval, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposes. Item number fifteen, twenty-nine fifty-five and twenty-nine eighty-nine Dolphin Street. Commissioner Livy Latham recuses. Recommended for approval. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation with revisions of note numbers five and numbers ten regards to a donation from Tree Bank. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposes. Pass. Item number sixteen. Thirteen oh one, Cochrane Causeway. Recommended for approval. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are you ready for discussion?
Yes. I have questions. This area that's highlighted in yellow on our booklet, that's where the two proposed tanks are going? Do I have that right? Is anything being removed from that site to add those two, or are they all going on there?
The two new tanks are going on that site, and nothing that is there is being removed.
And they had a prior planning approval for exactly this? And that's how it comes back?
They are grandfathered in, so they do not have to have planning approval at this time.
And that was the interpretation of what the council did? As far as, can I hear?
I'm sorry, I'd be glad to answer. When this came up, Ricardo Woods, city attorney, Jim Rolster, council attorney, and I had extensive conversations and meetings about this. And I didn't bring the copy of the ordinance with me as passed by city council. I think it's paragraphs for section seven, that the way it was... The way that paragraph was changed at the council meeting when it was approved, grandfathered all sites that had existing types. Later in that same paragraph, it said, any new types must have so-and-so approvals. I think it said planning approval unless it previously been obtained planning approval, or it was built before planning approval was required. It was our legal opinion that that sentence in the end of the paragraph was contradictory to the first sentence of that paragraph that grandfathered the entire site. If you grandfather the entire site, how can then you not... How can you then say, well, this part of the site is not good or suitable for a tank when the entire site is? It's just contradictory. It made no sense the way it was worded. So, all other precautions, notifications, requirements, safeguards that were in the ordinance as passed apply here. Building permits, notification, got the PUD approval. Everything else is, all the safeguards are there, just that the entire site was grandfathered in by the wording of that section.
So, setbacks have to be met?
Yes, ma'am. The PUD and subdivision regulations still apply. It's just the use has been grandfathered for the entire site. Are there any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Pass. Item number seventeen. Did they make it in?
Thank you. Let me interject before you start. They have filled out the use restrictions. I haven't seen it. That document we just remembered requires the owner's signature. The owner's not here. Staff and I have no problem with y'all approving it without the signature, if y'all want to approve it. I'm not saying you should. But if you vote to approve it, subject to that document being signed by the owner before it's sent to city council. We're okay with that.
All right. Twelve oh one and twelve oh three Michigan Avenue. Is there any other deliberation between council members? Commissioners?
I have a question about what the restrictions are.
Need to open the hearing again?
Oh, yeah. What are the restrictions?
Just restrictions will be open. Well, the restrictions would be bars, lounges, firearm sales, pool halls, and liquor stores.
Could you say it again into the mic?
Bars, I'm sorry, bars, lounges, firearm sales, pool halls, liquor stores.
And those businesses would be restricted from being in the B two?
Yeah.
But isn't that, can I ask a question? Isn't that what L B two, doesn't it talk about those things being removed in L B two?
It does. There are some other things that are not allowed in L B two, that are not on his list. Like a drive-in restaurant is not allowed in L B two, but a drive-through is. There are some other things like that where there may be outdoor activity that are not allowed in B two, excuse me, L B two, but are allowed in B two.
I have a question. In the staff report on page four, it talks about voluntary conditions and use restrictions offered by the applicant, including the eight-foot-high wood privacy fence. But then I saw a reference to a six-foot-high wood privacy fence on page seven with recommendations. I was just kind of wondering why those were different?
And Ms. Andrews, I'm sorry, you were kind of breaking up. I guess head position and the microphone weren't always...
Sorry. The voluntary conditions and use restrictions laid out on page four of the staff report, I didn't see all of those reflected in the recommendations at the end of the staff report, including the security lighting, the eight-foot-high wood privacy fence.
Were those the old voluntary use restrictions, or these were the new voluntary restrictions by this applicant?
Those were the old ones, because it was March thirteen, excuse me, March seven, two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
So, this kind of is a review of the previous application that wasn't approved?
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question.
Are there any more?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Andrews.
And also reading on page four, it talks about mobile housing have a housing initiative. How does that play in this particular application?
Well, the housing board developments that are south of here, that encompass Birdville and...
Harvey Taylor.
Harvey Taylor, those are in the process of planned redevelopment, being raised, and then being redeveloped. There could be easily arguments that this could provide closer services, retail services for those developments. If I recall correctly, we've not seen final plans, but there were also parts of those plans that were to include retail. So, it was just more of a reference that those projects are coming online to let y'all be aware.
Just clarification, have we opened the hearing portion?
Yes.
So, we're back in a hearing, right? So, the residents that are here will be able to respond to this newest information?
Is there any other discussion of mine? Commissioners?
I do have, I have a question for the staff, I think. I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
If y'all recommended L B two, which also restricts things like appliance repair stores, I was just going through the list. An antique store, I mean, there are a lot of restrictions under L B two that are not covered in their list of voluntary restrictions. Did y'all go through all of those uses? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out why you, when they asked for B two, you recommended L B two. Is it because you thought that some of those uses particularly, but these additional ones might be problematic for the neighborhood?
We simply felt that L B two was the more appropriate zoning because of the proximity of this particular site, going farther back into the residential area than the previous or existing B two. While it does not go back farther than the existing church directly across the street, the church is allowed and are one with planning approval. So, you know, it just was more logical to staff than it'd be L B two.
So, one step down instead of...
Or half a step down.
Would these voluntary restrictions allay your concerns about a B two zoning of this site?
I think it would make B two more palatable.
I think we're going to hear from residents. I guess my concern is just, I understand there's some time constraints, but doing this on the fly and not giving the neighborhood an opportunity to kind of respond. You may be able to speak to that. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I'd like to kind of hear from them to see kind of what their issues are.
I would echo the same as far as working with the council member and any concerned residents or church members. It's always good to have those kind of come-together meetings, and it often expedites the information for the council member to be working with you as the developer, applicant, and the community.
And, Ms. Rich, I did have a conversation with the council member, and I understood that the parking was an issue, and I was going to wait and see if they were going to bring an issue again. What I understand is, as the church members park now, they park on the street and in Michigan Avenue and on some of the side streets, not in this parcel. And so, this parcel being developed, they're still going to have the same parking impediments on Sunday mornings. And so, that's what I understood to be the prevailing concern. Any new concerns that are voiced here today, we're more than happy to entertain them. We are trying to develop a piece of property that has been empty for about fifteen years, and it's an eyesore, and the council member wanted to develop. And I'm not here trying to make any representations for him, but I did speak to him.
Yeah, that's good.
I have one more question. Have y'all had an opportunity to speak with the residents that live in that area? Maybe just a group meeting, just to hear their concerns? And then y'all can share with them what type of development will be used, what this property will be used for?
The offer to do so, I don't know this gentleman or who it was, but yes, because the initial approach to try to do this was first to go through the elected official at first. We understood that the pastor from the previous application is no longer there, who was most vocal. And then it was told to me that the problem was with the parking.
So, I have not had a meeting?
No, ma'am.
Does the gentleman who spoke against prior, do you have any additional comments, sir? After hearing the discussion here?
It may be helpful to restate what the voluntary restrictions are. I didn't actually hear all of them, so, if that's possible.
Bars slash lounges, firearm sales, pool halls, liquor stores. Does that include the sale of alcohol from any kind of store, or just a liquor store?
This is their terminal. This is, this is taking from the...
Okay. I understand, but some stores do allow beer and wine sales. Is that included in this or not?
He just said bars, but he didn't say packaged stores or... He just said bars, but he didn't say packaged stores or convenience stores.
The reason I ask goes, I represented the prior developer who tried to get this rezoned and that was a big concern of the neighbors was the sale of alcohol, all alcohol. I was just wondering if that was included in this.
I don't think there's been addressed, but the planned tenets of this store do not include anything that would have alcohol sales. The focus now is Subway, a wings place, a nail shop, a phone store, a beauty parlor. We don't have these tenets down, but none of the focus is on a store that would be selling beer and wine.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Well, that was one of my contentions was the alcohol sale. Is there any way you can have that laid in concrete for it not to sell any alcohol in that neighborhood? Because it's already rampant with corner stores. And you put another business that's selling alcohol, it's just going to make it worse. And it's becoming now, we get to the point of a high crime area. When the Housing Board moved a lot of residents from the north side of town and they moved them into the RV Taylor development, we catching pure hell over there. They've had a drive-by shooting yesterday and then several killings in the neighborhood. And all this come from drugs and alcohol. Then you got a problem with lawtering, that's going to be one of the situations that we're going to end up with. Now, if they come up, I'm all for development, but it's that we hadn't had anybody to come in, not even the church to say, look, we're going to put something there, what you think we should put there. Now, what he proposed, if it was a wing shop and a nail shop, that's fine. But when they move out and then they move somebody else in, will they change it, knock the walls out, and then come up with this Trojan horse deal and put a family dollar back up in there? I mean, that's what they wanted to do in the beginning. The building looked the same like a family dollar, the layout is the same, and that's my contention that this might be just one of those little oaky-doke deals.
When it is use restricted, it does follow the rezoning. So if, even if they were to sell the property, the rezoning that is part of what the city oversees would transfer. If the new owner wanted to then use the same square footage to do exactly as you're saying and sell alcohol, it would require a whole nother rezoning. That's the part about having use restrictions.
Okay.
It is something that the city will actually follow. It's not like a covenant or a handshake. It literally is a requirement of the rezoning which follows the property.
Okay. Well, a lot of this could have been headed off if they would have had a community meeting. Or the developer would have sent a notice inquiring about this, because a lot of this, because I don't know the difference between a LB2 and a L something, something. So all this was new coming in. So I'm in the dark on all this. This is totally different than what we dealt with two years ago. And it just seemed as though these people just walked in the neighborhood and say, I'm going to put it here and to hell with you.
Well, I hear what the applicant is saying, there seems to be a genuine interest in dovetailing well into the community and doing a good reuse. So if the applicant who has been given the privilege to produce these use restrictions, and I know the application, I guess, lets you check off certain things that you won't, can they expand on it and say any, am I putting words in your mouth, I'm just trying to say, are they allowed to then have it, go deeper into it to say no alcohol sales?
Between now and council, can that list be increased again?
No, it has to be.
Can they do it now?
It has to be now.
Okay, well, that's...
If they were to say they would add no alcohol sales...
Because if it's just a nail thing and the future uses doesn't involve any alcohol sales, either a bar or a package store or a restaurant or whatever, things that you already eliminated.
I have 16 properties for this plan. He has one location that has a bar. I think I can speak for him and add no alcohol sales.
Well, then that would, are they allowed to go outside, color outside the lines?
Right, Dale.
Yeah, that would be great.
I have a question for Mr. Christmas, if you don't mind, it may be out of order.
He's signing in blood right now.
Hey, Doug. Do you have a red pen if he wants to make it look like blood?
Hey, Doug, while we're waiting, wasn't the voluntary condition originally when this was before the planning commission, no alcohol sales?
I don't recall.
Yeah, they're listed right here.
But the city council voted it down when it got to the city council?
No, I think we voted.
Correct.
At that point in time, the council member did not approve of that tenant we had. How he feels about this, this is completely different type of development. So if it was a family dollar before, he might be happy that this is going to...
Let me add to that, they made reference to this previous application, which I guess it's relevant in the staff report, but it also extended deeper into the property. We're acquiring, I'm selling less property, so we, they were encroaching into the residential area by two lots. I'd like to say also that the church across the street owns this property, they bought it in hopes that they could create a facility for them. It's not a wealthy church, it's very few members, parking will never be an issue from the church. I've been there, a dozen cars naps, and it didn't work out for them. So here they are, they've been suffering, paying property taxes for 14 years because they didn't get an exception because they were a church. So it's been a real burden on them. So this is benefit that they have an opportunity to have to get out from under a liability.
Mr. Christmas, my question has to do with your timeline. My question has to do with your timeline. I know you said you had a sale that was supposed to go through. I am concerned that there hasn't been any dialogue with the community. If we were to consider going ahead and postponing it for the next meeting, even though y'all have submitted those voluntary use restrictions, how would that affect your circumstance with the purchase of the property?
I'm sorry, I forgot about the person.
Charlie, you're closing, if they held it over for two weeks, how would that, would that kill your closing?
I have a closing deadline to meet.
When is it?
I don't have it on my tip of the tongue, but it's scheduled out based on the timeline that we're working on.
If they hold it over for two weeks, is your contract going to expire?
I haven't, yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
It will expire if we hold it over.
The community is still going to get a chance to speak in council. Whatever we do today, this has to go to council for final approval. So they know they still have to meet to make the community satisfied, to get the council members' support. No, they don't have to re-advertise if we approve it subject to these limitations.
And it's enough for the community?
And assure them they get it zoned, they still have to go to council and get the councilmen's support. And so they'll still have to meet with the community. So there's going to be dialogue.
Right. And if there are other site-type conditions that are agreed upon when you meet with the neighborhood, like making the fence eight feet instead of six feet as required, things like that, those can be changed without re-advertising because they do not relate to the use. They are simply site improvements.
We're giving Mr. Smith some assurance that they still have, whatever's decided today, they still have a voice.
They still can meet between now and council and agree to some other things other than use that will not require re-advertising once it goes to council.
There was a notice sent out to all the property owners, correct?
Yes. We, within 300 feet.
Well, he's on Melrose, Mr. Christmas, so he may have not been within 300 feet.
He abuts, yeah, he abuts the property.
Oh, so he's on this Melrose.
So they got noticed, but we had one person that responded.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Could you read the list again so we can hear those use restrictions, just so everybody's completely clear?
Bars and lounges, firearm sales, pool halls, liquor stores, no alcohol sales.
Is there anyone else here to speak against? All right, thanks. Did I see a hand?
Hey, you guys, we're still in a school zone.
Could you just please state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Artyia Bonner.
Who's the resident?
1400 Melrose Street. We're still in the school zone, we're down the street from elementary school, we have the middle school over there and we have a high school. We already have a whole lot of trouble in the area. And you're talking about putting a wooden fence up. We will, if you're going to put a fence up, put a brick wall up like you do on the other, upgrade our neighborhood too. Because like I say, we already have deep prime area and we want to be satisfied and accommodated just like the other neighborhood out on West Mobile and off Government Street and off, oh, so many different places, you have such a nice area and it's upgraded. But we appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
We will like to be invited to the next meeting so we can know what's going on.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a question of the staff. Looking at the site plan, where it abuts residential, we often do try to buffer as best we can from R1 to the B2 and cinder block or masonry is usually somewhat better than just saying. We have, we've been pretty good about trying to do that when we can. It wouldn't be, obviously it wouldn't be along Bay Shore, it would just be partially part of the Melrose Street, those three homes it looks like that are backing up to it. And then there's one house that is, has a, I guess has a Bay Shore residence, so it would be from that site over. I don't know how many, I don't know how many feet that is.
I mean, it's been a while since we've required a masonry.
We did it with...
About 300 feet. It's really not that often that the planning commission goes to a masonry wall. It has been done on occasion, but generally it is the privacy fence even out in West Mobile.
No, it's usually a privacy, but going from a R1 to a B2 or LB2 with these, or B2 with these restrictions, it still is making a pretty good jump from the R1 that was abutting R1. So we are really changing a lot of classifications. And so I am sensitive to the fact that that would be, you know, would keep the noise, the litter, not that fences don't do it, but, and I don't know what trees would have to come down, because I'll be honest, I'm not real familiar with the site if there's any trees, you know, that would be better to be left standing. But I do hear that and I know that my phone rings a lot when it is just a fence as opposed to something that could have been better at the time when it's R1 to B2. I mean, you get the headlights, I mean, it just is more, not the best blend with somebody who's in the house when people are also utilizing the business. Like B1 is the best buffer to an R1, because it's more nine to five and you're gone nine to five. So this is probably going, if it's, if it's what I'm hearing, it's going to be a lot of activity on weekends and probably early, and I don't know how late, because we're not putting restrictions obviously on how late the business can be open. But it is a residential, so I would certainly lobby on their behalf that where it hits the R1, that it be a six-foot masonry wall, buildable and doable. So, I mean, that's just where I'm coming from, honestly. I don't know if anyone supports that, but I'd like to offer that as a condition.
So basically you're saying you would like to amend recommended condition number three that says provision of a six-foot-high wooden privacy fence?
We haven't made a motion for anything yet.
No, I'm just saying that's where it would change, though.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you would want to amend that.
Because I take it you were putting it where it hit the R1.
Where the site abuts residential is owned property, except within the street setback area where it would drop to three.
Right.
It would appear that the goal there is to try to buffer the businesses, you know, what would serve them better and probably more cost, you know, cost-friendly, would be the wooden fence maybe with a landscape buffer in there, because I mean, building that masonry wall back there along those property lines, I mean, what you're going to see is a great big brick wall as opposed to something green. So if you went to a, you know, the wooden fence, you know, or the fence as suggested and maybe had some landscaping to soften it, you know, that would probably, probably serve the residents that backed up to it better.
And on recommended condition number two, if you look at the site plan, there, it appears that that setback is maybe eight feet.
Eight, yeah.
The zoning ordinance requires a minimum of a 10-foot setback. Condition number two refers to provision of a protection buffer strip in compliance with 644 D1 of the zoning ordinance. Now, if the commission wanted landscaping in that area, then you would need to add that because the fence meets the buffering requirement as far as dealing with the transmission of light, trash, debris from one property to another.
I mean, we got, what's the setback from, the masonry wall would have the same setback from Michigan Avenue as a building?
A 25-foot setback, yes, sir.
I mean, these folks that are behind here are going to be, you know, they have a wall and then they have a masonry block building that's probably 20 or 25 feet. I don't know really if they'll achieve anything on this south property line by requiring a masonry wall. Because the masonry wall can't extend any further that way west than the building.
Right, because the building is at the 25-foot setback line.
So we're going to require a masonry wall to block a masonry building?
So you could put it, you could put it at the corner of the building where the dumpster is and then turn the corner where it also abuts residential. But you're saying all the people that are on this side, which I gotta look at that, are going to be looking at the back of the wall? And so really it's the third house on the block where the dumpster is located and then the fourth house and then the one that has, I imagine, the Bay Shore.
Is block required around the dumpster?
The dumpster does not have to have block around it, but it does have to have an enclosure, a minimum of a privacy fence, but it can be a block wall. It also has to be tied into the sanitary sewer.
Any further discussion?
Richard, and that eight-foot setback in the back of the building?
10-foot.
Well, 10-foot, that can be landscaped.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What did you say, Mr. Amberger?
So the 10-foot, the 10-foot setback off the property line, that can be landscaped as well, which could be up above, you know, a standard height fence.
That's on the 124 feet that runs down the rear of the property?
He's talking about the east-west property line that runs behind the building.
Where the dumpster is going to be located?
Right. And they're already showing it on their, on their, it's not going to be their western much property line or eastern much property line.
Yeah, I'm not good with, I just know back and front.
They're already showing it right here.
Yeah.
They're showing the fence with the landscaping beside it. They supplemented that with landscaping right behind there.
Can we require that the dumpster be in up? Because that's awfully close to residential, too.
There being called a discussion, after all these discussions, I would like someone please formulate some type of a motion.
I'll try it again, okay? A masonry wall where the building ends at the rear to then turn the corner, don't ask me what direction, but up towards Bay Shore.
But that's not a motion, that's a...
Well, I'm just trying to get the direction and make sure it's...
Chairman, I think I have, I think I have the motion. I'd like to move to approve subject to staff recommendation with revisions to item B, the zoning being approved as B2 with voluntary use restrictions, subject to receiving the owner's original signature and with landscaping added along the south property line, 196-foot south property line.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
You have a... You have a properly motion and second it. Is there any additional discussion?
Landscaping and fence, if you're not gonna do any kind of masonry?
Well, there's already a fence. There already is a fence shown.
Yeah, and we're, the number, number two, number three recommendation is provision of six-foot-high wooden privacy fence. So, to that, you would like to add landscaping along the south property line.
And just to be clear, we're taking subdivision and zoning together, or is this just a motion for zoning approval?
My motion is for all of it.
Motion is for parts A and B.
What kind, I mean, do you talk about the height of the, the landscape, or how, how close it needs to be together? Is it a continuous hedge? Or, or do we get into that, or just landscaping?
That, that's up to the commission. I mean, uh, you could say landscaping dense enough within one year, three years, your choice of timeframe, to create a screen? Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to help with wording, but it's y'all's decision.
How about let's, let's, let's add a, a landscape hedge with trees planted no less than fifteen feet on center to produce a, to produce a hedgerow within three years?
And trees, uh, fifteen feet on center, uh, overstory, understory?
Let me defer to Thomas. I would say red, I would, would have suggested red tops that would prepare, you know-
That would be like a hedge.
That would be the hedge.
A nice hedge, hedge up above, above that.
Yeah.
Or something else.
Landscape of a hospital, just give us-
Yes, thirteen trees.
We're trying to buffer some R1 property.
I guess I would just say that it'd be evergreen, an evergreen hedge.
Okay. So-
Would you please-
Condition number three, wooden privacy fence where the site abuts residentially zoned property, uh, then along the south property line, a landscape, evergreen hedge or buffer with trees planted every fifteen feet on center?
I think the hedge, the hedge is just a motion.
So, within three years, um, and to reach a height to exceed that of the fence, or, I mean-
Yes, yeah, 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 to exceed the height of the fence.
And it, and, okay, I think that's gonna be what the majority's gonna want, if not the, or masonry. But in the event the community works with everybody, the council person included, if that was to be tweaked at council, that would not need to be re-advertising.
That would not require re-advertising because it does not deal with use of the property.
Okay.
And I'll do my best to get the wording.
I'll remit, I'll remit my second on the new shrubbery language.
Properly moved and seconded. No further discussion. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses?
Opposed.
Have one opposed?
I would go on that right now, too, actually. But does it pass?
One opposed.
Yeah, it would pass.
Miss Sessions, opposeds? Item number eighteen, it was Commissioner Libby Latham accuses, uh, requested for a holdover for November seventeenth meeting. I'll make that motion. Remove the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses? Good enough. Approved. They closed deliberations. Now, time for other-
Oh, I'm sorry, the staff didn't hear.
We didn't get the motion and second. I apologize.
Oh, the motion was for the holdover November-
I'm recused.
I seconded the motion to hold every single pause.
And Ms. Latham recused, and it passed. Other business?
Under other business, uh, you'll have the number eighteen, um, well, I'm sorry, it says other business. I'm sorry. Um, the staff report for John Lawler, Airport University subdivision, this is the four or five lot subdivision. I can't remember, uh, original lots that were applied for one lot, uh, and rezoned to, um, LB2. And the planning commission previously had denied this. It was, I don't think even heard by the city council. And thus, the developer applicant appealed it to circuit court. We, both the city and the developer filed motions for summary judgment. We had a very lengthy hearing before the judge. Uh, the judge after that, uh, we submitted other briefs after that. The judge called us and we talked more about it. The judge put a lot of time and effort into this, uh, drove by the site, and ultimately made his decision that is shown in this report, that he upheld their appeal in order that the property be rezoned from R1 to LB2, um, without any real fur-, other further guidance. Um, so, the reason it's back here before y'all is because pursuant to that court order, and to add, for y'all to approve it, and to add that one condition that is stated in the recommendation, thus, it cannot be developed until it comes back before y'all and we see a site plan.
So, we're not acting on anything today?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, yeah. So, we need a motion to approve it with that staff recommendation for the, so subdivision and the rezoning pursuant to the judge's order.
So, just to clarify, we're being ordered to approve it?
That's why I say we don't have a choice.
That's right.
Okay.
But it'll, it'll come back for a PUD. If it goes forward, it'll come back for a-
Correct. And from what I understand, the use that came up previously is not still on the table. Um, but even if it is, it will, whatever use to which the property is put, we'll have to come back to you for a PUD.
Okay, I have a question. Does it also come up to council as regular protocol? Because council's final-
For rezoning, yes.
Okay. But again, under court decree?
Again, under court decree.
So, I get all that. So, the plant, they'll, would they have to come back for a planning approval or a PUD?
PUD.
PUD.
And that was very specific in the judge's order. And, and I have to admit, the order was a little confusing because it said the PUD as a condition of the subdivision, which is why you also see it on the subdivision. Uh, Mr. Lawler agreed for clarity that it be put on both.
All our action is, is making one lot of legal record and rezoning the property.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And that, and when the, when the PUD comes in, then traffic engineering would look and-
Everybody will review it.
Because it's a minor residential street.
Yes, ma'am. Everybody will review it for appropriate conditions of approval for the PUD.
And, and strictly, when it was a court case, just out of curiosity, it was a bench trial? It, it wasn't, it was, so briefs just went back and forth? Is that how you did it? So, no resident got a chance to talk to the judge?
No, and that's, that is somewhat, I won't say unusual, but typically, you, judges don't grant motions for summary judgment on this kind of case and would hear the neighbors and hear, would hear testimony. But, um, like I said, even before we walked into court to argue our motions, he'd already been by the site, and he knew, he knew it very well. And, uh, and he just, he, he was adamant that, uh, that property needed to be used as business and not residential.
Did he not know that the entire corridor is R1? Just saying.
I'm not gonna say anything about any judge sitting here. Thank you very much. Now, make a motion and vote before you get me in trouble.
Can we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to Judge Douth's order, we, um, approve the rezoning with the condition.
Second.
Do I have a second?
And the subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Okay. And getting to the fact that it would be reviewed as a PUD, and hypothetically, if you've ever been on that corner at five o'clock, and you know that the left-hand turn lane heading west on Airport for people turning left-
Can we have a second, please? Because that's, that's a, that's a-
No, 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 I'm going somewhere with this. Could it condition me that it has to be extended?
We don't have a choice.
Because there is no way, and I don't know what's planned on the LB2.
Do I have a second?
Can that of mobile play factor?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. We've heard plenty of discussion. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes, not that you, we have a choice. Approved. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Meeting adjourned.